Vehicles parked here are going to just be trailers. They come in, drop the trailer, and then go about their business.
And how long do they leave it there for?
I couldn't tell you.
And then someone else picks it up, a different company?
You'd have to ask somebody with experience in the trucking business.
Well, I can ask you offline to get a better understanding of it. Okay. Okay. Then, Mayor Police, do you have anything else? Okay, so I think you hear concerns, but they're concerns, they're good to know, and that you're looking at addressing them, correct, Mr. Gallow? And then to come forward with a more developed plan?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. And, okay. Well, I'm not fully on board until I understand more about this. I don't understand enough of it yet, but I'm hearing that there's probably a majority that are okay with it. Aldrin, Eugene Wesley?
I think the majority, what I'm hearing from the council, the majority is in favor of pursuing with this project, but not voting on a temporary until we see what the plans are. Because, I agree, I'm not going to sit here and say yes, go ahead for it. So I think the council's got the, I know I'm on board, and the council has a concern to go, to continue to work with staff to try to bring this project forward. I think that's the intention of this, am I?
Correct.
Sure. Mr. Forrest?
Yeah, the next step at this point, I think, again, I think the council has expressed, you know, a certain degree of support if certain criteria can be met. So really, the next step will be for Gallow International to prepare their proposed site plan, their proposed engineering plans, and then get their applications in so that they could, the next step will be for them to go in front of the Community Development Commission, get a recommendation from them, and then, again, bring it forward to this committee for, you know, discussion for some sort of an actual approval.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Then, so I believe that that would conclude this discussion. Is there any, anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Gallow, or input?
I definitely will work with the idea with electricity, because a lot of this company over the road, they come back, like you were saying, in the weekend, and they have, and they do park tractors and trailer together. There's a case where they drop just a trailer. But I look at this idea with electricity, because I never experienced the idea that they keep the truck running all the time to do that, but I'm not sure, I'll look into this too, for sure. And I want to make sure that the village is satisfied with electricity, I think, then that way they don't have to start it, keep all night running, which they have to pay more money for doing that, anyway.
We got a gas station, we could get sales tax.
So we could sell more tax, more, these all.
Okay, well, thank you for coming and chatting with us.
Thank you.
So I believe that that can be for information only at this point. Next item is the ICSC verbal report from Mr. Clicker.
Yes. Thank you, Aldrin Winger. I will be very brief due to the time that we've already taken with the meeting tonight. But before you, I did provide a memo in your packet. As you know, I attended the ICSC recon conference recently. We've, the good news from this conference is that attendance was, was coming back up. There were over 30,000 attendees this year. And this is, again, the premiere show for commercial and real estate development, or developers of commercial real estate and real, commercial real estate users. Again, we've, as in past years, we've had, we had some very successful, productive meetings with developers and other interested parties out there. The outline of some of the more promising meetings is in the memo. Was also able to reaffirm some contacts that we've had in previous contacts, conferences, just to make sure that they're aware of what we're doing in the City of Wooddale, and that, and that the City of Wooddale is aware of their development plans. Also, at this year's conference, we were able to do a presentation to the conference in what was called the Public Sector Pavilion. And as I indicated in the memo, honestly, it was not worth the effort for it. Two to three attendees at the, at the presentations was typical for all the, all the communities that did this, and ours was no different. Quite honestly, could, time could have been better spent working the floor. Basically, we've been trying different things at this conference to expand our, our reach and our, our presence. In conclusion, I do believe the ICSC recon show has value for us to get our message out there about Wooddale and keep our, keep contacts with developers and interested financiers. However, if we want to take it to another level and really begin to work on the development proposals, I believe that we would have to up our presence at the, at the, at a show such as this, and that would include possibly a booth. I've been working with Choose DuPage. The Choose DuPage is the economic development arm of DuPage County. I've been working with them on a marketing committee, and Choose DuPage is actually looking to increase their presence at conferences such as this and allowing the municipalities to come under their umbrella, if you will. I'm going to continue to work with them on that and see what cost proposals may be for doing something along that nature, and obviously, report back to the, to the council with any findings that we come up with. If anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Just a little input as well, that, yeah, we should have a booth. I mean, to showcase what we have. So, what is it, an extra $1,000 or whatever, 500?
It would be, at a show like this, a national show, the cost would be about $2,000 to us. I'm looking, again, working with DuPage County, Choose DuPage, to lower that cost to us.
Yeah, and to me, that's worth it. If we're going to go there, and we're going to spend the money to go there, to showcase what we have. We have the flyers, we have the folders, we have a study, several hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars on it. Let's show what we have and really try and draw people, instead of seeing what other people have. So definitely, we need to do that. Aldrin, Eugene Wesley?
One question.
Yes, sir.
You been down there two years now, or three?
Four.
Four years. Have we got any businesses from this conference to come over to our town?
We have, again, we've made several contacts in the development world that we have not had. There, there are several developers who are watching what we're doing with the Thorndale Corridor. We update them regarding that, we work with them on that. We also use it as an opportunity to learn about what national retailers are looking to expand and what their desires are. The current trend was, for retail in the past few years, that they are working for, looking for local franchisees only. The national stores are not doing their own stores any longer. So we've been working, then, with local contacts to see if we can develop relationships with local franchisees who may be willing to do the developments with these national chains, should space become available. Quite honestly, the stores that are looking to expand are all looking in the 20, 20,000 to 25,000 square foot retail space. We honestly don't have that available right now.
So my question is, with the trips that are going, I mean, not the trip, to promote Wooddale, is hinging on the Thorndale Corridor? That's what we focusing on?
That is the majority of what we focus on. But as you see in the memo here, there is, there was a, a significant interest in doing downtown development with this this year.
Okay, let's back up here. The problem now, we don't know where Thorndale Corridor is going, okay? Because I don't know, I know there's been meetings, Mayor, I know you got your hand up for that. The problem here now is want to be a lot easier, just make enough contact down there, the town, because it seems like all we're doing is promoting Thorndale Corridor. Thorndale Corridor may be goodbye, we don't know. Okay, we don't know. Okay? But didn't we make enough contact there that we could keep these people, Bryce, on the phone or emails and that? Have you picked up any more with the Thorndale, or?
We certainly do that. However, at a show like this, there's opportunities to talk to developers that, quite honestly, would never take a phone call from us.
How about, like, temporary uses? Do we get ideas, like, with the Gallow property? Can we give them a different thought on it? I mean, is there anything that comes to mind, temporary use?
We've been working, we have been working with our Convention and Visitors Bureau on, on temporary uses, sports-related uses. Those, again, those usually have high-traffic demands and parking locations, and we do work on sites like that for temporary uses, along that nature. One of the biggest trends that's going on right now with retail is, they're called pop-ups. The Spirit Halloween Stores is one that you'd probably be familiar with. We've made several, you know, talked to their company representatives regarding that, and I'm working with the, or will be working with Georgetown Mall Management to see if any of those are appropriate for theirs, for any spots that they might have available.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm going to call on Aldrin Woods, then, Mayor Police, Aldrin Woods?
Just a comment. I know it's time, it's, at times, it might seem like wasted energy or money, but out of sight, out of mind. We have to keep people informed on what's going on and keep pushing forward, and including the development of downtown. I mean, we're doing things on our side, we need to keep those active connections, and it, sometimes, it's just perchance. You meet the guy at the right time, who's got the right client, and we need to be there. That was it.
Mayor Police?
All I'm going to say is, we are going to be bringing update on the Thorndale Corridor. Last couple of meetings, there's a conference call tomorrow, there's another meeting on Tuesday. I already talked to the manager. Council really needs to know what's going on. The state has been trying to pin the mayors that are on that corridor into submission and whatnot, as far as the value capture. The mayors are pushing back. The state and I thought, do you guys want this project? You know, they make it sound like they're willing to walk away from the table, and 10 minutes later, another person from their, their staff will have this up and running, and, you know, we're going to be done with the engineering, we're going to be building in the next three to four years, and the project. Basically, they're trying to get something out of us so they can build the road at our expense. And the mayors are pushing back. We will be having a conversation on this, I promise you. I already talked to the manager, and he has promised me that we are going to have a quick update.
Thank you. Aldrin Roy Wesley?
Ross, you have these contacts here. Could you go through them and tell me what they are?
The Taman Group? The Taman Group is a realist-
Hang in, I'm looking on page two.
Oh, okay. For example, Casto Development, they are the developers that are doing the Randhurst Village right now. If you're familiar with that project in Mount Prospect. Oliver McMillan is one of the world's largest mixed-use developers. Buxton Corporation is a, is a psychographic service corporation for municipalities to use to find out who the best retailers that, for them to, to work with are. Regency Properties, again, another mixed-use developer. McCaffrey Interest, another mixed-use developer. Wyndham Hotel Group, self-explanatory. Joseph Frieden Associates, mixed-use developer. Inland Real Estate Group, not only mixed-use developer, commercial developer, property manager, one of the largest when it comes to shopping centers. DLC Management Corporation, again, developer-manager of real estate properties. Excel Realty Holdings, developer of mixed-use properties. And this year, there was a lot of interest and discussions, as you see, with not only developers, but also investment companies. The, the, the people that are going to put the money with the developers. They, there is some movement in the financial world out there right now, and the, the investment brokers are starting to sniff around for future developments.
Can I go on?
Okay, but will it be brief?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I thought part of this conference was try to bring businesses to Wooddale.
Correct.
Not just developers.
It is.
Okay. So, what you mentioned here, basically, all developers except the Wingham Hotel Group.
Wyndham Hotel Group, Primrose Schools, and again, I, I make contacts with, with a lot of the national retail chains and groups to find out what their expansion plans are for the Midwest and Illinois in specific. As I indicated, a vast majority of them want to work with local franchisers only. So we are working with our local contacts now to get relationships built with local franchisers to convince them that Wooddale is a place that they want to have a franchise.
But again, the conference, from what I'm understanding, is to bring businesses to Wooddale. I see one hotel that you made a contact with, and the rest of them were all business, developers to build shopping centers for the Elgin O'Hare. Is this what you've been doing for four years, has been contacting these and not concentrating on businesses to bring them into Wooddale? Not just developers, but something to bring tax dollars? I, weren't built out except for the Thorndale Corridor?
Correct.
And, you know, if, if, for four years, if you've been working on this, just to, to talk about the, the developers, we got enough developers right here in DuPage County, we don't need to go to Vegas to find them. We got developers all over DuPage County. We need businesses. And if you're spending four years talking to developers, you know what? You don't need to go anymore. And we don't need a booth if we're going to go to developers. No. You know, we're spending money for nothing. He needs, we, we hire this person to bring businesses in.
Okay, well, then, directed at the city manager at this point, to look at, what is the role of that position and what's the purpose of that position at that point?
Mr. Manager? For four years? You know the question?
I've been out there myself for three years. I think it's a, a value to the city. For the amount of dollars we're talking, we spend money on things far less important than this. You're talking about $900 to $1,200 to send somebody out there. You can go out there for 20 years at that price, and maybe the 21st year, you get somebody. If you don't go out there for 20 years, you're not going to get anybody.
So, in return, Mr. Manager, which, which, what business has come to Wooddale? Or, we don't have developers in, in DuPage County that can build a shopping center? Give me a business besides, on, on this list, that, that he, that we're bringing, that possibly bringing in to Wooddale for sales taxes.
Well, there's an old saying, the, the more stuff you throw on the wall, the more likely something will stick. So if you want to use the strategy of not throwing as much as you can on the wall, we can certainly stop going if the council wishes to do that.
My point is, is that we're sending you to this conference to, to bring in businesses, not to talk to developers. You know, the, if we're spending the money for developers, you know, why don't we just tell developers in DuPage County, "Don't even bother with Wooddale, we're going to go to Vegas, I'm going to find a developer over there to build our shopping center." And you know what? The taxpayers of DuPage County or Wooddale, you know what? We're going to give our money out to another state. The bottom line of this conference is to bring businesses to Wooddale and to bring tax dollars. And you know what? We're not done with that videotape yet. When are we going to finish the videotape, too? You know, I'm overstepping it now, but I'm tired of going, I'm going to finish up. I'm tired of-
I'm the chairman, and I'm stopping it, so-
I'm tired of spending the money.
Okay, you're done? Okay. Any, any other questions before we go? Aldrin Woods?
Just a comment after listening. Again, you know my opinion, out of sight, out of mind. I, I understand the concept that we're entertaining, you know, guys that are out of state, but the reality is, people from DuPage, that are developers, national companies that develop in all communities, are at these meetings. Part of the problem you, you touched upon is the whole Elgin O'Hare-Thorndale thing. That's really the only thing we have to develop, and that's, quite frankly, why we need a developer that may come in with a concept and look at the value of doing something on Irving, and it's hard to get a franchise, other than a really small one, to come in because we don't have the land amassed for them to purchase at this point. So really, for development, without us putting some skin in the game as far as land or having a concept like we have on Elgin O'Hare, you're not going to get a franchise to come in without a developer paving the way, going, "This is what we can do. I've talked to the community, we've got the preliminary go-ahead, we've amassed some land, and, and this is what it would cost." So, for me, that's where I see some of the value. I mean, there's argument on both sides of the coin, but those same people that they talk to out of town are actually some of the people that do develop in DuPage County. You know? Thank you.
This item, for information only. Next item is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A is amendments to local building code in July. Item B is City of Wooddale floodplain buyout policy in July. Item C is Topgolf, date to be determined. And item D is a sign code, just science discussion. And I don't believe that the, that Lakota needs to be here for that. It's just more of a discussion, to see where we're going with it. Any other items to be added on, on, on future meetings? First, Aldrin Roy Wesley?
I don't know where it fall under, for rezoning roadmap. That needs to be redone, because the census was done.
Mr. Manager, does it, like, was the census that much more people that we have to redo it, or?
Well, I believe we, we have talked to Attorney Biden, and that is something we're already working on bringing forward to you, so we're already aware of that.
What committee does that fall under?
Could be Public Health and Safety, it could be PZB. I mean, whatever the appropriate committee is per the attorney, then we'll bring it forward.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Okay. Aldrin, Eugene Wesley?
One quick question. Topgolf, what are you bringing forward again? Just briefly, what is it?
As I mentioned in my earlier discussion, I contacted the Park District to be sure that they were completely satisfied with, you know, the whole Topgolf project. They did bring to my attention a couple of issues that we have.
Thank you.
That's it.
I make a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Anything on the question? I'll in favor. Any opposed, motion carries. We'll take a five-minute break. Yeah.
Both, motion carries. Item number four, we have a present, a presentation by DuPage County Water, uh, DuPage County on a water, Wooddale-Itasca reservoir. Okay, Mr. Kramer?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, tonight, we have with us Chris Vonamie from DuPage County. He was asked by Staff, Baxter and Woodman Streets, or, excuse me, Stormwater Committee, to make a presentation on the Wooddale-Itasca reservoir, specifically, the reasons for its use, the criteria for its use. Staff did provide him most recently with some critical elevations that we use for Salt Creek in and around town. I, I believe he's going to give a brief presentation on the concept of the reservoir, the use, timing on its use. And then, outside of that, we can take back any questions that all you folks have. If perhaps he doesn't have that information directly in front of him, we can come back to you either at the follow-up at another Public Works Committee meeting with, with those answers. And with that said, I will turn it over to Chris.
Okay, thank you, John. My name is Chris Vonamie, I'm a senior project engineer, Page County Stormwater Management Division. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm going to kind of run through some of the upgrades that we are making to the DuPage County website, what information you can find on there. I want to talk about the operation of a couple of our major flood control facilities, that being the Elmhurst Quarry and the Wooddale-Itasca reservoir. And again, I want to show you the webpages, but they won't be live, but it'll be pictures of the webpages, and you'll be able to see.
This is Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. Sorry about that. Whoa. Okay. But I'm going to show you the upgrades that we're making to the website and, and run through how we actually operate a couple of these facilities. This is just a shot of the Elmhurst Quarry, and we'll talk more about this facility in a little bit. Thank you, Bill. This is, again, this is the DuPage County webpage, this is a new webpage that was just, came online earlier this month, in June. And what I just want to show you here is, if you go to this webpage, and I'll give you the address for the webpage in a little bit, but you have the opportunity to select Salt Creek, East Branch to Page River, or the West Branch to the Page River. We're obviously going to focus on Salt Creek tonight, but you can also come down here in the middle of the page and choose a watershed. You can choose Salt Creek. Or if you know the actual facility that you want to find out further information on, you can choose a facility. And it'll have a drop-down menu, and you can pull up either Elmhurst Quarry, Wooddale-Itasca, or whatever facility that you're looking for, and that'll provide you some additional information at those facilities. Next slide, please. This is actually the Salt Creek webpage. Here, you can see the outline of the Salt Creek watershed, we're in the northeastern corner of DuPage County. And I'm just going to kind of run through this and show you the information that's available on this webpage for the general public and for city, city management. But, but starting up here on this map, these blue squares are representing flood control facilities that the county owns and operates throughout the, this is the Salt Creek watershed. And so if this was the live page, you could take your mouse and hover over those, and it'll pull up the name of the facility. You can double-click that, and it will pull up pictures and different information about the facilities. The two, again, we're going to concentrate on is this one, the Wooddale-Itasca reservoir, and the Elmhurst Quarry. But these other, there, there's these raindrops, these represent the rain gauges that we use throughout the Salt Creek watershed. And in this table down here, this shows also the, the rain gauges, and it will show the actual rainfall amounts that have fallen for that particular event. We also have some stream gauges, these are the USGS stream gauges, these orange, or, I'm sorry, the green circles. Those are represented down here, so that you can go to these, double-click those, and it will pull up the stream hydrograph showing the elevations of the streams at those locations, and that's from the USGS. We also have three real-time stream gauges, one located at the Elmhurst Quarry diversion structure, one located at Hager Road, and one located at Irving Park Road. These are real-time stream gauges that report back information to us, and these are critical in the operation of the Wooddale-Itasca reservoir and the Elmhurst Quarry. Also, at the very bottom of the page, we have a section called Flood Forecast Discussion. And I'm going to go into a little bit about that a little later in the presentation. Next slide, please. Okay, Elmhurst Quarry. This is, Elmhurst Quarry, we're, we're looking east, kind of into the city. South is to the right-hand side here, this is Route 83. You see Salt Creek here in the foreground. This is our diversion structure where we actually take water out of Salt Creek and put it into the quarry. I'll talk more about the weir later, but once water flows over the weir, it goes through a box culvert, flows into a vortex drop shaft that drops the water down, straight down 80 feet. It then joins a tunnel under Route 83, and, and then it discharges into the west lobe of the quarry. The quarry is divided into two lobes. There's the east lobe and the west lobe, and the quarry, it's divided into two lobes by West Avenue. There is a keyway right here that joint, that links the two lobes together. But this, again, it's a, it's an offline reservoir, so the idea is, when we're in flood stage, we take floodwaters into the reservoir, we temporarily, temporarily store them there, and then, after Salt Creek recedes, we pump that water back out into Salt Creek. There's two pump stations, an east lobe pump station and a west lobe pump station. This west lobe pump station pumps the water into an aeration facility before it enters Salt Creek. This facility was completed in 1996 and provides 8,300 acre-feet of flood storage for the Salt Creek watershed. Next slide, please. This is a close-up of the diversion structure. This is on the east bank of Salt Creek, you can see Route 83 in the background. These posts here are just debris rack posts to keep debris off of our weir. But the weir is made up of three different weir segments. To the north there, we have an 80-foot section of variable stop log weir. We then have 140-foot section of fixed broad-crested concrete weir. And both of those weirs are set at an elevation of 667.5. So water in Salt Creek has to rise up to elevation 667.5 before it starts to flow into, over the weir and into the Elmhurst Quarry. We also have a sluice gate down here, and this sluice gate gives us a lot of flexibility in the operation of the quarry, because even if elevations in Salt Creek here aren't high enough to flow over the weir, we can always open the sluice gate to take water into the quarry. And, and 90% of the time that we've operated this facility, it's, it's only been through the sluice gate. The quarry went, again, went online in 1996, and since that time, we've only taken water over the fixed weir on three different occasions. And that was in February of 1997, in August of 2008, and in July of last year, 2010. So again, we, whenever we operate the quarry, and we usually operate several times a year, it's through that seven-foot-by-seven-foot sluice gate. Next slide, please. Okay, this is the Elmhurst Quarry webpage. And just to start off, if you go to the webpage, we have kind of an overview, or an aerial view of the quarry, and you can kind of highlight these different features at the quarry, and it kind of takes you through a visual tour of the quarry and explains how the facility operates. But as I said, again, when we operate the quarry, we normally take water into the sluice gate. And so the big question is, well, how do they know when to operate the sluice gate? And we have stream elevation gauges, as I mentioned before, along Salt Creek. And one of those gauges is at Hager Road in Oak Brook, which is downstream of the quarry. of those gauges is at Hager Road in Oakbrook, which is downstream of the quarry. And so we monitor these stream elevations during rain events, and when elevations there at Hager Road get to elevation 654, that's when we would operate the gate at the Elmhurst So again, this is a video image. We have a staff gauge and a...
Can you stop for a minute?
Sure.
Could you go back to the number you read off? When did you activate it?
When the elevation at Hager Road is at 654, 654.0.
And where is Hager Road at?
Hager Road is in Oakbrook. It is just north of 22nd Street.
Okay. Okay. Well, I just say write that number down if I remember.
So again, we have a video camera there, we have this staff gauge there, we also have ultrasonic and radar gauges there so that we can monitor that elevation during storm events. And now the general public can come up here, there's a window up here called cameras, they can hit that and be able to select these cameras so that the general public and community leaders will also be able to get this information also. And some of the other camera views, I mean, when you go to the video camera and you see that it's at 654, we're supposed to be operating the sluice gate, you can select another camera image, which is actually the Elmhurst Quarry diversion weir, and you'll be able to see that gate open, and you'll be able to see water pouring into the quarry. You can also come over to this table. This table, I know it's very hard to read, I apologize, but this is the sluice gate percent open. So you'll be able to see right here, is that gate 50% open? Is it 100% open? Is it closed? And you'll also be able to read here how much flow is actually coming into the quarry. These tables down here represent the pump status of the two pump stations, and just a couple of other video, pictures that you'll be able to see from the video cameras. This is a shot of the west lobe in the quarry. This is the tunnel that outlets into the west lobe, so you'd be able to see water flowing through this riprap channel through the west lobe. We also have cameras in the east lobe, so you'll be able to see water, you know, the amount of water in the east lobe also. And one other camera image that we have is over here, this is on one of the debris rack posts, this is very hard to read, I apologize, but this is another staff gauge, and so you'll be able to see that staff gauge, read the elevation of that, and when elevations on this staff gauge get to 667.5, 667.5, that is when water begins to spill over the fixed weir into the reservoir. And I know that's a lot of information to comprehend, but we try to summarize that with descriptions at the bottom of each of these pictures so that you'll know what you're looking at when you see them. Okay, next slide, please. Next, we're going to talk about the Wooddale-Itasca reservoir. Here, this is Thorndale Avenue. We're south of Thorndale, east of Prospect. This is Salt Creek flowing in this direction here, and the reservoir system is located right at the confluence of Salt Creek, and this is Springbrook Tributary. The reservoir is divided into four cells. Three of those cells are gravity-drained. These are the three gravity-drained cells. Those cells provide 325 acre-feet of storage for the watershed, and then this is the larger pump evacuated cell. This provides 1,425 acre-feet of storage. I don't have a good picture of the diversion structure here, but this diversion structure is made up of four sluice gates. So we don't have a real long fixed weir at this location. We have four movable sluice gates that we can open. Next slide, please. Okay, down here again, this is the Wooddale-Itasca page, and so again, we have an area down here where you can take a kind of a picture tour of the facility. But again, the big question here for this facility is, how do we know when to operate and open, start opening the gates at Wooddale-Itasca? And again, we have video cameras and stream elevation gauges down at Irving Park Road, and so we can continually monitor those elevations. And when elevations at Irving Park Road get to 676, 676.0, that is when we initiate the opening of the gates at Wooddale-Itasca. And again, we have an area showing where the cameras are, and if you hit that, it'll scroll down and show you the different camera options that you have. One of those options is the staff gauge at Irving Park Road, and it's hard to read, but this is the 676 elevation right here. So if you go to that page and you see that, pull up that video image, and if the camera is showing that the water elevation is at 676, you know that we should be opening that sluice gate at Wooddale-Itasca reservoir. So a couple of ways you can check that is you can go to another camera image, and this will pull up the diversion structure, and you'll be able to see the sluice gates there and whether or not they're open. You can also come over here in this table. This lists the gates 1, 2, 3, and 4, and it'll tell you the percentage open that the gates are at that time. Another view that we have, this is from the north side of the reservoir, looking south back at the spillway, and if the gate is supposed to be open, you'll be able to see, you may not be able to actually see the gate open, but you'll be able to see water flowing down the baffle block spillway into the reservoir. And other information that we have over here, again, this is the status of the pumps and the pump station, and then this also lists the elevation of Salt Creek right at the spillway. The second one lists the elevation of the water within the reservoir, and then we also have the elevation here listed as the elevation of Salt Creek at Irving Park Road. So you'll be able to compare that with the actual video image, and they should be synced, although we are having a little bit of problems with that right now, but I'll talk about that in a little bit also. Next slide. Okay, as I mentioned before, we also are working in cooperation with the USGS to develop a flood forecasting system, and the system uses the county's hydrologic and hydraulic models in a real-time mode. And what we can do is we can use the hydraulic model that we have for Salt Creek, and from those rain gauges that we have, we can take the observed rainfall amounts that have, that show the rainfall that has fallen in the area. We then get a precipitation forecast from the National Weather Service through their QPF, the Quantitative Precipitation Forecast, and we can add that rain to what has already fallen, run that through our hydrologic model, and then run that through our hydraulic model, and that will estimate or predict how high the stream is going to get and at the time of that peak. And so this right here is an example of that. This is flood forecast simulation at Irving Park Road. This red hydrograph line, this is a hydrograph. A hydrograph is showing the stream elevations. This is showing elevation on this axis over time, and these are days. And so back in May, on May, basically 14th, 2010, this was an event that was going on, and we're showing, this red line is showing what the observed stream elevation is, and you can see it ends right here on the 14th. That's when the observed data stops, and then we ran our flood forecasting model, and that model then predicted, well, at this location, this is what the stream is going to do. So we hope to utilize this information. You know, this is saying that the stream is going to get to 677, so we could put that, we will put that information on our webpage so that community leaders and the general public will know what DuPage County is predicting that the stream will get to and the time of that peak for various locations along Salt Creek. Next slide, please. And this is something that was also developed by the USGS, and this is just for a stretch, a small stretch of Salt Creek. It's Irving Park Road inundation mapping. Here's Irving Park Road, and for this section of the creek right here, we have this inundation map that developed by the USGS, and what you can do, if this was the live page, you could come over here to an elevation at Irving Park Road and highlight that elevation, and it will show you the area of Salt Creek that would be inundated. And so you can go there, you can look at what the existing elevation is at Irving Park Road and highlight what area will be inundated, and then you can go and look at what DuPage County is predicting or estimating what the flood elevation will be for that particular event. And in that particular case, in the hydrograph, we saw it was 677. You could highlight 677, and it would show you the new area of inundation by the stream rising that high. And we hope this provides good information to the general public and community leaders so that during a rainfall event, they can see what elevation we're predicting the stream will get to, if they need to go and evacuate a, an apartment building or a hotel, they can, you know, know when they would have to do that. They could make decisions on when to close roads, make decisions on when to maybe deliver sand to certain areas if sandbags are needed, and the general public can look at this. And also, you can also change the base map to a, I believe, a satellite image so that you can see the actual individual homes and businesses from a satellite image, and then you can locate your home, zoom in, locate your home, and see, you know, what's going to happen with the rising waters and when exactly you will be affected and maybe have to start, you know, sandbagging or raising stuff out of the basement or above the first floor, things like that. So again, this is a tool that we hope will be useful. This is, again, just for the small section of Salt Creek, right around Irving Park Road. And if this is something that people find useful, we hope to expand this to other areas of Salt Creek, and also to expand this to the east and west branches of the DuPage Next slide. That's all I really have prepared. That is, what's across the top is the new DuPage County website address, www.dupageco.org, and then SWM stands for Stormwater Management. And then, once you're at that page, you can go to the real-time rain and stream gauge information, and you'll be able to see those pages that we just kind of went through tonight. And I do just want to say that these pages went live earlier this month, and we are having some problems with some of the pages updating frequently. A lot of the video images, I think, are very reliable. There'll be a timestamp, so you can see exactly what the timestamp is from those video images. Those video images are supposed to update every 60 seconds. Some of the other stream gauge information that we're having, particularly the county's stream gauges, those, we're having a little trouble with those reporting. We're working with our IT department to get those fixed, and they think in the next couple of weeks, two to three weeks, we should have much more reliable communication with those stream gauges. So again, we're not 100% there, but this is where we're moving, and we think it's going to be a lot of valuable information for the general public. So with that, any questions, please?
Okay. I'll ask my one, a couple of questions here. Why does Elmhurst Quarry get open before our reservoir, knowing it seems like we get flooded when the rain is coming, coming north? Because of Bussy Woods, it seems like it comes down this way, and we already got the brunt of it, but you're opening Elmhurst Quarry before us, knowing that we get it first?
Yeah, I wish, I wish I had some of the hydrographs from down, from some of the events that we've, when we operate, because Salt Creek, it's a very unique stream system, and particularly down there in Oakbrook and Elmhurst, the stream is a lot flashier than it is up here in Wooddale and Itasca. And what I mean by that is, when we have an intense rainfall, there's a lot of storm sewer systems, very vast storm sewer systems that just bring the water into Salt Creek in that area, Elmhurst, Oakbrook, Hinsdale. And so what we see is the local peak is very flashy, so the local peak from that, you know, right when it starts raining, it jumps up instantly, and we've seen it in those locations, specifically in the 2010 event where the stream was increasing three feet per hour just from that local peak from all of the storm sewer systems that flow into it at that location. And so what that causes, the local peak, it jumps straight up in the air, and then after that local peak goes down, it starts to recede, and then as the flood wave comes down from Bussy and from Wooddale, then a lot of times there's a second peak. But a lot of times, that first local peak is higher than the actual flood wave coming down from upper Salt Creek. And so a lot of times, what we'll have to do at the Elmhurst Quarry is we have to open the gate to accommodate that first local peak. We can then, after it recedes again, we can shut the gate, and then we wait for the flood wave coming down from upper Salt, because that a lot of times causes us to have to open the gate again. Here up at Wooddale, we don't have that flashiness necessarily, but we do have, we wait for the flood peak to come down from Bussy Woods, and so, but again, it's the flood wave coming down from Bussy Woods. It's not the local peak from storm sewers, local storm sewers jamming the water into Salt Creek that causes us to have to open the gate here. I know that's a lot of information, and I can, I can work with John and Baxter and Woodman to show you these hydrographs of what I'm talking about, but it's the local peak down there, Sugar Creek that comes in, Oakbrook Tributary that comes in down by Oakbrook that causes that local peak and causes us to have to open the quarry first.
Well, let's make, the drawback that I have with that situation is, I think Wooddale gets flooded more than Elmhurst. I mean, that's my impression. I'm just saying, if you, we get the brunt of it before Elmhurst gets it. I know what they did. They pitched all their water to that water hole. I guarantee you, they, they put pipes right to, you can't tell me they didn't put a pipe right to the reservoir there, because I guarantee you they did.
Oh, no, I mean, there is no, no, they've, they have not installed any storm sewers that dewater into the quarry. They've not done that.
I just don't see how it gets there that quick, but I'll open up the more questions.
Sure.
Mayor?
You're saying this quick flashing? I'm thinking the same thing. They're flashing because a lot of their stormwater is being funneled to their, whatever, their stream before it gets, so if Wooddale were to take on a project and start funneling water a little quicker downstream, would that be...
Well, there's, there are several tributaries. It's not just the storm sewers. There's Ginger Creek, there is Sugar Creek, Oakbrook Tributary, and Bronswood Cemetery all flow into those, into Salt Creek, kind of right in that same area. And so it's those tributaries that are bringing that large amount of water in that caused that local peak in Elmhurst and Oakbrook, that caused that local peak in the watershed there, and...
Mayor, you can do a follow-up.
Just a follow-up.
Sure.
In the last Memorial Day, was it just before Memorial Day, we had the storm, and it looked like when we went to bed, we were in pretty good shape, and then somewhere, I think you guys opened up the gates here at 5:30 in the morning, and, but that time, our streets were flooded already. Is there a way, instead of 676, I don't know, is 675 that critical? That might have saved our streets if we opened it, because I understand you guys model it, make sure when it crests, so if you open it too soon and fill up too soon, then you're really, you know, and creates a bigger problem. Is 675 or 674 that critical? Because those streets that, along the creek, they're a mess, the bases are shot, I mean, we're talking four or five million dollars' worth of work over there. Let's face it, we're going to redo them, and if they keep flooding like this, we're doing work for nothing. I mean, I know you guys do water modeling and whatnot. Is there a possibility to open these gates just a little sooner?
Well, we can, we can look at that. You know, the way we operate our facilities, you know, each facility has a finite amount of storage. We do not have enough storage in our facilities to eliminate yard flooding. We cannot eliminate flooding to landscaping. We cannot eliminate all of the roadway flooding. We just do not have that amount of storage in our facilities. What we try to do is we try to minimize and eliminate the residential flooding, structure flooding, and business flooding to the best of our ability. But we don't, especially in this Wooddale-Itasca facility, we don't have the storage where we could, we can keep water off of Wood, or not Wooddale, but Edge Brook or Forest View. We just don't have the storage in the, in the facility to do that. We can, we do have a list of elevations and stream locations that were provided by John Kramer, and we'll go through those with John and work with Baxter and Woodman to see if maybe we can tweak the operation to maybe try to protect some of these other areas, but we'll have to work with them on that.
Would even six inches, not even go to 675, but six inches earlier make a difference? I don't know.
You know, six inches is a, is an awful lot. I mean, if we're, if we're opening those gates at 675...
And a half?
Yeah, 675 and a half instead of 676, that will make a big difference of the amount of water that we put into that Wooddale-Itasca facility. And the problem is, if we fill that facility, it could take 30 to 40 days to actually dewater the facility. And so if we're, if we're trying to store water to keep a road dry, if we fill that reservoir, you know, the problem is if we have back-to-back events. If we have an event the next week, we're still going to have, you know, three-quarters of the reservoir full, and if we get another major event, we won't have the capacity in the reservoir to protect any of the residential or business structures along Salt Creek.
When you see a dam break, there's heavy water that comes down, it's dry over... When you see a dam break, there's heavy water that comes down, it's dry over here and it takes a while for that water to get there and build up. One of the problems we have in Wooddale is that that water comes from Cook County, it rains hard up there, comes down, isn't high enough to open the Elmhurst Quarry. It doesn't get to 667, but it's already at 678 in Wooddale. And we keep hearing from the engineers that it won't help to open that quarry a little earlier because the water has to get up that high or something. But if you talk to any resident on those streets by the Salt Creek, they'll tell you that they know when that quarry opens because the water goes faster and it drops down immediately. That's, now, this is, this is their observation and every one of them tells us this, yet the engineers say it doesn't make any difference if they open the quarry for the Wooddale water. And somebody's wrong and I'd like to know which one.
Well, we actually did a study on that. You know, the Elmhurst Quarry, it's a great facility if you're living downstream of the facility. I shouldn't say that, it does have some impacts upstream of the facility also, but, but here in Wooddale, we're two and a half miles upstream of that Elmhurst Quarry facility. And specifically when I say when we operate, we normally just open that seven-foot by seven-foot sluice gate. That's not going to have a drastic impact all the way up here in Wooddale. We had Christopher Burke Engineering do a study looking at our historical series of rainfall events. We have a historical series of rainfall events that includes 115 rainfall events and they ran that and they compared elevations throughout Wooddale, comparing operating the quarry and no operation of the quarry. And we looked at elevations along the stream in Wooddale and there was basically no impact. So I think it's more of a coincidence. I, I do not believe that the Elmhurst Quarry has that drastic of an effect all the way up here in Wooddale because of the actual location of the quarry.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Has DuPage County stormwater worked with Cook County on the bladder anymore since there's been change of leadership?
No, I do not believe that project has been resurrected. We do have a plan and a permit actually approved for that rubber bladder and we would love to move forward with that, but I think, right now, I think Cook County and some of the surrounding communities are maybe investigating another study to see how elevations might be reduced here in DuPage County as well as how some of their environmental impacts could be lessened up there in, at the, at the Bussy Woods reservoir. And I don't know, Al, if Al wants to speak a little better about that?
Yeah, I can add a little bit about that. Currently, Wooddale, Elkhart Village, Itasca and several other communities along Salt Creek have hired a consultant to look at some of the options that may be available in Bussy Woods. There are several organizations that are involved in that and one in particular is Friends of the Forest Preserve up in Cook County that have had some concerns along the way and some environmental concerns of modifying the flood elevation within Bussy Woods. There was an idea that was presented, I think, by Northwestern University about modifying, or looking at alternative methods of modifying that elevation in Bussy Woods to create more volume that would help us here, you know, in Wooddale. Right now, a consultant has been hired through Elkhart Village. Wooddale is participating in that as well as the other communities and looking at that hydraulic model to see if that is a viable, and we're also teaming with DuPage County as well and looking at viable options and what can happen and the impacts along Salt Creek. So that, I talked to Al Bonifus who's heading up that effort through Elkhart Village earlier this week and he indicated that they are still waiting to get some information together with the consultant that was hired. I don't know if they've ever really agreed to which consultant they're using, but, but that information is going to be forthcoming and would be incorporated into the model.
Okay. One more question?
Alderman Roy Wesley? Follow. Are you familiar with Itasca Country Club?
Yes.
Would, if the county did purchase Itasca Country Club, would they be able to connect that into the, to the Wooddale-Itasca reservoir?
I mean, I guess it's a possibility to, I don't know if it would be connected, but I mean, to create storage there.
I'm asking, would it, you think it would help Wooddale with our problem here if the, if the county did purchase that? I don't know if it could be joined together or not. I'm an engineer and I don't know how that pipe would work or whatever.
Well, sure, I mean, if you, if the golf course was purchased and, you know, there was additional storage created there, yes, that would provide a benefit to not only, like I said, that's kind of the downstream end of Itasca, but it would definitely provide a benefit for some of the residential and business structures in Wooddale, yes. But, you know, we'd have to look at the cost for that, too. I mean, that's, that's going to be a very huge price tag.
Well, I don't, I understand that.
Sure, sure.
I don't know how much the reservoirs cost or anything, but I know that at one time the Itasca golf course over there was looking to sell and I don't know if they're still looking to sell, but I don't know if the county was looking at that option either, but I would like to throw that information over to the county to look at if you could send that information back to them.
Certainly.
Alderman Coles?
You're DuPage County, right?
Yes, sir.
You have more control over anything. Supposed to, let's put it that way. Well, I live nowhere near Salt Creek and I lived there for 40 years and I have a flooded area every time it rains and I don't care if it rains one inch or two inch. We name a street Lake Aspen, all right? Every time that street floods, all right? Now, if you've got some pull, get the Forest Preserve to build a retention pond in that area with a ditch down the middle of it and see if you can get them to, to stop putting the waters in our street because that's what's doing it. And if you've got any pull, you're supposed to have because you're supposed to be the top one, then comes underneath, so you see what you can do. Now, I know what you, what they're going to say, we don't build retention ponds. Well, we built a million-dollar retention pond on Oak Meadow Drive to try to save water and they hooked up to it for their drainage. And why don't they build one? I've got a perfect spot for it. I can show you where it's going to go and where the ditch can be and we can solve two streets, Cedar, which has nowhere near Salt Creek, and Montclair, Juniper, Aspen and Ethel Lane. Them, all them streets flood. And if you can get, if you're, you talk about all this reservoirs opening and stuff like that, but you've got the power to get the Forest Preserve to do that. We could save ourselves a lot of headaches because I have a lady that calls me every time and she has me go over there and I watch the water come out of the Forest Preserve and right up the street. So we've got to do something with the Forest Preserve. And you are the head honchos of DuPage County, so let's see what you can do.
Okay, I do just want to say, you know, our department, the Stormwater Management Division...
No, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't believe that. You, you, you work for DuPage County.
I do.
Right?
What I'm trying to say is...
Well, you can make a suggestion or do something and see if you can get something done.
Okay, I'll forward...
Because the 40 years of getting this water on these streets is killing the streets in Wooddale.
That's all I got to say. Mr. Kramer?
Alderman Coles, I think you just gave Chris a raise. I say he's the most important person in County. We might need to let his bosses know that.
Yeah, they certainly don't know that.
We will contact, reach out to DuPage County Forest Preserve and perhaps even get a representative from there.
Okay. That was good.
One can, one can only hope, but I don't want to speak for Chris, but I think that would be best to start there and maybe, and maybe we do need to do that.
But I, you see, I could...
Certainly.
I don't live by Salt Creek at all.
And I just want to say this, you know, our department, the Stormwater Management Division, deals with flooding associated with streams rising out of bank and flooding. And, but we do, we do have another department, it's our Public Works Division, we have a drainage division in our Public Works Department and I think we will forward your concerns on to that department and see if they can help you.
We spent, we spent 15 bucks trying to get the water and it seems like something opens up and all of a sudden, the water's gone.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'm done.
Any other questions on the reservoirs or how they operate? Okay, I have no other questions.
Are we going to at least look at that water modeling of opening at six inches or...
Absolutely. We will, we will sit down with John and with Baxter and Woodman and go over that list that you, that was delivered to us. We need some direction on kind of where those locations are at and what the elevations mean, but we will look at if there's any way we can possibly tweak the operating plan to maybe address some of the flooding in those areas, absolutely.
Could I give you like two months or how much time will that take?
That sounds reasonable.
Okay. Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome, thank you.
Sorry for your wait. Okay. All right. Another report and recommendation for water monitoring report presented by Baxter and Woodman.
Nice. Okay, let's hear it, guys.
Mr. Kramer? I'm unsure if you're clapping for me or, oh, okay. I, I guess this evening we're going to have the big three. We did stormwater, now we're going to do potable drinking water and then we're going to finish off with some sanitary tonight, so...
Is this a three-hour presentation?
This is a relatively short presentation and it, and depending on questions and answers, it will... Tonight with me is Carolyn Greaves, Project Manager for Baxter and Woodman on the water model, Water Master Plan for the city. As you remember, last year, we had presented the idea in the CIP to put together a water model for all the city's potable drinking water, piping systems, structures, facilities, everything that encompasses drinking water and how we can improve not only fire flows, efficiency, our pumping, what upgrades we need to make in the upcoming years to be incorporated in the CIP. What I'm looking for tonight, basically, we're going to outline the water model itself. I'm not going to go through all the hows, whys, means and analytical data because it'll just bore you and it's really unnecessary. If anyone would like a hard copy of all that information, I'll be more than happy to provide it in written form, electronic form, however you would like. What we're looking for tonight is we're going to outline in your packet as well as in Carolyn's PowerPoint presentation, we're going to outline some things that are be, that are going to be included in the next CIP, not the CIP that we're currently in, but in the next CIP. So by no means are we asking you to commit any of the funds that you see. These, those have already either been committed for 2012 or will be at a future CIP meeting and we can discuss those at length. These are solely recommendations Baxter and Woodman is making, staff is making with those. We're going to prioritize those and again, bring those back to you at a future CIP meeting. So basically, all I'm asking is that you folks get a chance to see the water model, what the city paid for, what you got for that money and then where we would like to go in the future. Again, that can be programmed however you wish. And with that, I will turn it over to Carolyn.
Thank you. All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone's ready to talk about more water?
Yep.
All right. Like John mentioned, there are lots of ins and outs to this report. I personally find them very interesting and could talk about it for quite some time, but I will keep it very short so we can keep it moving for you tonight. But please do interrupt me as I go through. If you have any questions, just let me know and I'll do my best to explain. I'm going to try to put this here, is that going to work? I do have copies of this PowerPoint if anyone wants them.
I can see them.
Should we distribute that? No?
No, unless people want copies of it.
You can take those. No? Okay. All right, so what I'm going to talk about this evening is the City of Wooddale's Water Master Plan and the water infrastructure needs that we unveiled as we went through this project. And really, the purpose of this project was to develop a systematic approach for evaluating and developing recommendations for the water supply and distribution system. And I heard a term used earlier this evening by one of the Aldermen that said out of sight, out of mind. And often, water supply systems are out of sight, out of mind. So what we did is to take a look at developing a water model that helps us understand what we can't see every day so we can help make some better decisions for the city. Now, one of the, the most important parts of this project is to really get a good, sound understanding of your water supply system. And we spent a significant amount of time working with John and Mark and Joe and Brad and staff to make sure we understood how the system operates. And that was really a key component to this study. Now, usually at this point, I would start listing out what everything is in your system, but I decided to take a different approach tonight and I want to show you a really hard-to-read schematic, which is a good reason, I handed those out. And what this will, is basically going to tell us a little bit this evening, is how your system works in its entirety. And essentially, you get water from DuPage Water Commission at two different points in your system, and I'm going to use my little laser here. DuPage Water Commission brings water to the Riker Pumping Station and DuPage Water Commission brings water to the Potter Street Pump Station via a park station or receiving station. And what's really key about this, and again, hopefully you can see this a little bit better in the printout than you can here, is that you've got two pressure zones throughout your community, the north zone and the south pressure zone. Essentially, the north zone, just higher elevation, therefore, it's a little bit taller of a tank over here than there is an elevated tank in the south pressure zone. Now, why this is important is because this, these tanks really dictate how your system operates. The water elevation in this tank dictates the pressure that you have in your distribution system. So again, we needed to make sure we understood how all these components work so that we can make sure we make some sound analysis of your distribution system. See if I can get this to work. One of the items that I wanted to kind of show you a little bit, too, are a couple pictures of your, of your stations. And this is the Potter Street Station that was in the south pressure zone that I was showing you. This is actually one of your, you know, your biggest station in your community, there are four pumps there. It has the capacity to pump out about 6.7 million gallons a day of water, so a significant amount of water comes out of the station. You've got two ground storage reservoirs, a 1 million gallon and a half a million gallons of storage of water at this site. In addition, you also have an emergency supply well, so that if there, for some reason, you couldn't get water from DuPage Water Commission, you do have a well for emergency supplies. And there's a generator here, too, to help keep operation during any emergencies. The other big station that I was mentioning earlier in the north zone is the Riker Station. And this particular station has about 0.7 million gallons a day of capacity. It's a smaller station, there are two pumps here, there is a large reservoir here, though 1.25 million gallons of water is stored here at the site. In addition, there is another well here, well five is located here. So overall, in your system, you have three emergency wells, you've got one at each station and then you've got another one in the, in the distribution system. The other item I wanted to show, again, I recognize it's hard to see in, in detail, but the emphasis I want to just make sure to bring to you is just to give you kind of a geographic understanding of where everything is in your system. Everyone sees this all the time. This is your, your big elevated tank on the north side of town. Your 0.1 million gallon elevated, elevated tank is located over here off Irving Park Road near your wastewater plant. That Potter Street Station that I was mentioning is located over here on the western side of your community. And really why I wanted to point that out is because, as I mentioned, you have two pressure zones. This station here really is providing water for everything I'm circling here, primarily your residential areas. The Riker Station up here on the northeast side, also receiving DuPage Water Commission water, is, is keeping this zone over here in operation, which is much more your industrial, industrial area. Okay. So, we got an understanding of the system, what are we going to do with it? What we did with it was we built a water model, which is a really powerful tool for the city. And a water model is essentially a computerized, computerized representation of everything that's in your system. So... So every pipe in your, under your ground, all your pumps, all your storage, everything that's part of your distribution system is now put in the model. And one of the key elements to emphasize here is it was built from your existing GIS. So we really wanted to capitalize on the amount of work that the city's already put into building a GIS. And we took that to develop the actual model. So that really strengthens the model even more because of all the information that was developed in the GIS over the years. Once you have that model, it is actually, um, tested against the field calibration. And here's some, uh, a field test that actually was not in Wooddale. Um, but it was a, this is a similar type of process where we run the fire hydrants so that we can have a better understanding of what your system is doing. And we take that back to the model to make sure it's accurate. Because as everyone knows, a model's only as good as information you put in it. So we made very cautious, um, and a conscientious effort to make sure that we put good information into the model. So once you have a model, it can show you pretty much anything, any, any criteria you want to throw at it, we can put in. So I just put a couple of examples of, of typical types of exhibits that we could prepare with the model so that we can understand how your system operates. And what this is, is a pressure contour exhibit. So similar to a topography map that you may look at, um, that you may have in your car, if anyone has those anymore. But what this does show us in, in essence, you're seeing these blue and magenta lines here. These are showing you the pressures that are in your distribution system. So when you're taking a shower right here, you're probably getting about 65 pounds per square inch of water pressure. You'll see you've got quite a lot of similar pressures throughout your community. You operate typically in about the 60 to 65 PSI range. Um, you have some, uh, some lower areas over here down in this quadrant and some higher pressures up here. And remember I said this was the high zone over here. So again, makes sense. The other item that we can develop with this model is a real sound understanding of fire flows throughout your community. How much water can you get at any point in your community under any type, any types of typical demands? And this exhibit right here is showing us again, at any point, uh, by, by color code, how much water gallons per minute you can get from this particular intersection. Now what's good to really note is anything kind of blue up to magenta or really, really good fire flows are above 1,500. You'll see Wooddale has a lot of great available fire flow. You have a really good network of, of distribution means. You'll note there's some red over here. Those are the about a thousand gallons a minute. We typically like to target 1,500 gallons a minute for residential areas. It meets ISO Insurance Service Office requirements. So we like to try to get these to improve a little bit. But most of these are actually near dead ends or at the end of system. So we often see that in, in distribution systems, kind of those lower fire flows as you get closer to the end of the system. Uh, anything else I want to emphasize here? No, in general, um, again, like I mentioned, you have really good fire flows throughout your system, um, that we get to look at here. The next step was taking a look at main breaks. We took a detailed analysis. We went through a history of main breaks on the past 10 years and took a look at them to see how we could improve upon the situation. And I, I put this little table in here because I thought it was interesting. And the number of breaks you've had, a majority have occurred on water mains that were installed in the late 60s, 68, 69, uh, timeframe. This is not unusual. This is what I see in quite a few communities that I work with. The water mains that were put in this time, um, they changed the way the, the pipe was being developed, so it was, was not quite as, uh, strong. And there was also a, a, a big kind of boom going on in that time, a lot of development was going on. So we often see that pipes were put in really fast with not as, uh, maybe rigorous of a construction methodology, methodology. So seeing main breaks with pipes at this age is pretty common. The other trend I wanted to show you here is on average, the city sees about 28 main breaks per year. It's a, a, a good value, um, for a community with about 75 miles of water main, which you do, uh, based on American Water Works Association standards, you should, um, have, uh, probably about 22, 22 main breaks a year to, to meet a typical. So you're not that much higher than that. I mean, I often walk into communities, you're seeing about 100 main breaks a year. So you, you have, you know, main breaks and there's certainly a, a concern, um, but it's not an extreme amount of main breaks. Any questions? Yeah?
Okay, thanks. You're okay.
Yes, sure.
You're okay?
Okay, like the 1961 installation, is that because maybe only one pipe was installed that year and that's why we only see 1% breaks? Or like, how are the percentages broken up?
Yeah, I'll explain that.
Okay.
So what I did is I went through, I went through all your records, um, of main breaks and then, so maybe in 1961, you might have, may, may have had about three main breaks on a particular block, a street address. So I went off a street address. And then I went back into a lot of, remember I mentioned I got a lot of data from staff? So a lot, part of the data from staff was the age of every main in your system. So then I took that location of the break, looked at the age, and then I, I started making some direct correlations where all these breaks were and the age of the water main. So I created a nice big spreadsheet, which as an engineer makes me happy. So I could take that, I could sort that, and I can start seeing some trends develop for the, the quantity of main breaks and when those, those mains were installed.
I'm going to ask you one question.
Yeah.
On the main break, that's a break on a main line. It's not a break of a service line from a, from a house to the pipe.
That's a great question. I took out the service breaks. I focused on the main breaks, um, because that really is, uh, the biggest impact to your system. If, when you have a main break, it impacts your public works, impacts traffic. There's a lot more, some are more critical to evaluate the main, not the service.
So just so you guys know that this, this is the main pipe because we do have a lot of old service breaks going.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is like 1968, 1969, were there just, um, do we just have 60% more pipes built in that year than the other years and that's why we're seeing more breakage there? And, and I understand the rationale as well about that it wasn't done as good, probably because it was just like such mass production or whatever.
Sure.
But like, do we have that many more pipes and that's why we're seeing more percentage breaks?
I think that, that is part of it. It just certainly is a, a big part of the community was put in in that timeframe.
Okay.
So again, you're seeing that kind of correlation start to, to build on itself there.
Okay. Thank you.
So once I took a look at the main breaks itself, I went through and identified, uh, a rank for each main that had had a break, a break. And what this, what this is, and again, we can get you copies of the actual exhibit so you can take a look at that. But what this is, is any area that's had a break, I went through and prioritized it in terms of how critical it is to replace that main. So if it's had, you know, a lot of breaks, obviously it increases in criticality. But the other components that I, I added into this is how much, how important is this mean to your system operation? So I got that kind of information from the model. So how much flow is coming through this main and how much friction is this main seeing? And these components, I combined these three components to come up with a ranking factor so that I could go through your entire system and identify any areas that had main breaks and start developing a rank. So anything that's red right here is a high, higher rank. So as we're starting to look at system improvements, we want to be able to say, okay, we're going to take a look at the red mains first as, as something we want to replace. Specifically, um, for example, when you're overlaying this with your street improvement projects, take a look, is it red? Yeah, we should be looking at this. And we'll talk about that in just a sec here. All right. The other thing I wanted to bring up is Irving Park Road, um, water main. And we did a detailed performance analysis on that. I understand completely that that's an important situation here in the city. So I want to take a really close look at Irving Park Road water main. And what I did first is just from an operational perspective, what's the, what, how, what is the eight inch and 12 inch main mean to the system? You've got 12 inch and eight inch throughout this, this stretch here. This red highlighted area here is Irving Park Road. And what it showed, what my model showed me is that the existing diameter is more than adequate to provide good fire flows through, through this area. So if we're going to be looking to do any future improvements here, we don't necessarily need to upgrade the pipe diameter to get any better fire flows because you're getting good movement of water throughout your town. You have a lot of good east-west corridors for water main already. So that was, that was a good thing to determine. The other thing we want to take a look of course is the number of main breaks we've seen here along Irving Park Road. And again, you see the, the light red highlight here is Irving Park Road. And remember I mentioned before the main rank is the red is kind of key. And you'll see there are some red under here. There's some red areas that we want to definitely take a look at improving. There's also some, some orange and yellow over here again, it's a little hard to see on this white background. But it is definitely an area that needs consideration. We certainly would not say otherwise. But I also wanted to emphasize, remember I was saying that the late 60s mains, a lot of this area was built in that timeframe? And we're seeing a lot of areas that have additional need for, for main impro, improvements in this area. So Irving Park Road is certainly not unique in this, in this particular, um, part of town here. Um, but it is something that's certainly to take a look at for long-term, um, improvements. Um, I know, uh, the city has, um, already put in a, a, a low interest loan pre-application. I think that's great for, uh, future improvement, improvements here. And I certainly would recommend continuing with that process to, to, to get some funding for here. All right. So now that I've got the model and I've got an understanding of the system, we used the model to start, um, making some identifications for areas that we would recommend improvements. And I won't necessarily read through all this unless you want me to. Um, but I will emphasize what we did is take a look at some specific locations over here. And then some of the benefits for, for what we will see the improvements if we do a, a water main, uh, change out. So often it was to improve those red ranked mains for the main breaks. And it was also helped with looping and fire flow and some pressure issues. So, uh, overall, this particular, um, analysis, we started developing this grid of, of water mains that need some, uh, attention. So those are some of the key ones. The other item I wanted to touch on also is not just water mains that we look at, but we looked at storage in terms of, uh, system improvements. And one of the recommendations from the report is to replace existing Tower One, which is the, the, you know, the smaller tower over there by the wastewater plant. With a new half a million gallon tank. There's a couple of reasons for, for this and just some of the, um, basic parts of it is it is a small 100,000 gallon tank. As water moves up and down that small tank, it really is requiring those pumps at the Potter Street Pumping Station to start on and off, on and off constantly. As this tank, and it's such a small volume, a little change makes those pumps start moving like that. That could be part of the reason why you're seeing main breaks in this area. By having a larger volume of water up here, it'll help dampen that effect and could ultimately help reduce some of the surges that your system is seeing. Because those surges often do result in impacting your mains in that type, type of manner. In addition, for, in terms of fire flow, uh, you have really a very small volume here for fire suppression. And that's a, a big consideration to keep in mind. Also, it's a 50-year-old tank. Um, it's, I think it's budgeted for repainting in a couple of years from now. That's a 40,000, was it? $40,000 to repaint. So I, I think it's just something to start planning for in terms of overall improving system operations. Considering you're going to have to repaint it and maintenance costs, a, a larger tank would be a better value in the long run for the city.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, I think I, I saw that it's a million four or something. Now you say this is 50 years old. Does that mean it's reaching the end of its life or?
It's getting up there in years. Typically we plan about 75-year life cycle for a tank. It certainly isn't any structural issues with this that I'm aware of. Um, it's not necessarily needs to go for any safety concerns. It's just if you're looking at overall for, for our system operations, more elevated storage in this area would benefit your system. So we wanted to put this in as a, as a plan to start considering, uh, additional storage over here.
Okay.
What I wanted to show you really briefly here is, um, another fire flow exhibit. Remember before I had a lot of red over here and a lot of red over here? And I was mentioning those were fire flows that needed to be improved. With the water main improvements that we're recommending in the report for, for the short-term water main improvements, you can see how that has reduced and eliminated a lot of those red fire flow areas. So I just wanted to give you a visual for the benefit of those water main improvements. Okay, lastly, I just want to give you a summary of, and I believe this was in the executive summary that was handed out of the, uh, recommended improvements. A lot, actually all of your planned, uh, capital improvements over the next, uh, several years. Definitely, um, we agree are needed for your system improvements with regards to everything we talked about, fire flow and main breaks. Um, in addition, uh, we also, um, I did notice a mistake, by the way, this Royal Oaks Drive, uh, should be in 2014 so that it parallels with, uh, the street improvements project. But overall, we, we recommend, we agreed with everything that was in the capital improvements plan. Some additional costs beyond 2016 are some of the additional water mains that I was recommending. And like John had said, kind of a long-term to start planning for some of these improvements. Nothing, nothing critical at this point by any means, but just have an awareness of the needs that your system will have in the future. In addition, I put Irving Park Road here. I put two costs. I mean, obviously that's a long stretch of water main and a busy section of town. Yes.
How many linear feet does Irving?
I knew you were going to ask me that. And I don't know the number off the top of my head. Sorry. We looked at two options here as, as a, as replacing. Okay, go ahead. Replacing versus lining. A lining can be a feasible option, uh, is actually quite much more cost-effective. So there's just two things to consider as you're kind of going through and, and considering what you want to do here on Irving Park Road. That's all I had, just kind of a high-level overview of the draft report. Any other questions for me?
I have just one. On that water tower. Was that in the, uh, that's what I was looking for. Was that, could you go back to those two slides?
Yep.
Water tower replacement in CIP.
No.
So if we, so if we slot that in there, what year will we look at putting that in there if they recommend should be replaced?
After 2016. I'm not proposing bouncing any existing CIP items at this time unless something happens again. We may hold off on painting it. You might not see that, you see, you might see that be removed from the existing CIP. Right now, you know, there is, as Carolyn said, there's no structural reason to remove it. There's no lingering issue with it. Really, it's just a fact of it's inefficient. Takes a lot of money, energy to pump water back and forth out of there. Doesn't store a lot of water, doesn't provide for a lot of fire flows. And it may cause more of an increase on breaks on the older main on Irving Park Road. Now remember, all that was put in around the same time from Tower One going eastbound was all put in in the 60s. So we're getting to the useful life. Carolyn says 75 years for a, um, a water tower, you know?
Let, let me go back and, and, and a follow-up on that. So what is, what about the other two towers? Are they passing their lifespan that we would have to look into those towers too? I, I, I'm just trying to figure out what the cost is coming down the line here.
Just briefly, um, the industrial parks relatively new, that was in the 70s. Um, so you know, the tower on Wooddale Road in the 80s, uh, late 70s, early 80s. Um, you know, all those relatively new. If anything, that Potter Park Lane area over there, we are doing some repainting to those. We did have those inspected. They all came back in good shape. The steel that they are made of was in good shape. The cathodic protection systems were working. We did go with the full-blown prime and paint on those. Again, we're maintaining our systems. Um, if I can just reiterate what, you know, was said tonight, you know, we have good systems. We have good pressure out in the system. We just need to maintain that level of commitment to our infrastructure. And I believe we're doing that. Again, if I thought that the tank was in need of replacement prior to outlying year 2016 and beyond CIP, I'd bring it to you. Right now, I don't see that. Again,